We are now live on Facebook and we are live on Zoom.
All right. Well, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the class at school committee for Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. We're meeting in person in front of a lively crowd of chairs. And also virtual with Facebook and Zoom. I'm going to do a call to order. Order, everyone. And let's do a roll call. Mr. Kenny.
Present.
Mr. Carr.
Present.
Ms. Leskey.
Present.
Mr. Collin.
Present.
And Mr. Guile, present. We are all here. With that, we will begin the meeting and do our pledge.
Pledge of the oath. We just through the flag of the United States of America, in which the Republic, which stands on each individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I think I stumbled through that pretty quickly, having had a couple missed meetings. One thing I want to let people at home know and talk to the committee, we will have at the end of the agenda item, likely, a item that was not reasonably anticipated within 40 hours of the meeting, so it was not on the agenda, but was discussed with the select board last night, and that is the select board has requested the school committee review and vote on whether it supports a warrant article that would provide for a capital stabilization fund for the schools in the amount of 1.5 million per year, with a potential to increase two and a half percent each year. This has been a subject of quite a bit of discussion among the town, including public forums at the select board and at a public forum on Monday, right here at the middle high school, where we fielded some questions. So the idea of the stabilization fund is not new. In fact, it's been discussed off and on for at least the bulk of this year. But what is new and what we will have in the latter part of the meeting is a vote on the specific warrant language. We're still waiting to get that warrant language in, but through the magic technology, we should be able to get it in through the internet during the meeting, and we can post it on the, maybe post it or read it out loud when it gets here. So.
It has arrived.
It has arrived. So we will just, everyone stay in suspense until we get to that. But I did want to front load that for people at home to know that that will happen, and it is not reflected on the agenda because it just happened yesterday, the select board. So. With that, I will open up the floor to public comment. See if we have any public comment. I don't see anything in the chairs. So anything online, public comment, public comment, just as a reminder, is that part of the agenda for the public to comment on anything that's not on the agenda. If you have comments on something that's on the agenda, your fee to let us know, but we'll reserve the actual discussion of that until the agenda item. So with that buying some time. Dr. Scollins, any?
At this point, there are no comments.
Excellent. I mean, not excellent. We like to engage with the community, but does move us on to our next thing. Our next agenda is invited guests. I understand that our invited guests, which are students who have done a commendable job on a commercial design and student lobby space, have some sports and activity conflicts. So they are not here. We are deferring their presentation to our, is it the next meeting on?
No, we'll actually do it November 15th, when the high school is scheduled again, and they're excited to present. So I really wanted, it's a great example of authentic student learning and really advocacy for something.
Yes.
Nice. So it'd be nice to have.
So we're excited. We're excited to have them, and we definitely want them to come. So November 15th will be the time for them. So with that, we've cleverly walkered it through items A through C. We'll move on to item block D, which is school updates. I'll turn it over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan, to let us know what's been going on in the schools.
Thank you. Yes. So a few updates. There we go. A few updates from, we've had a good couple of weeks. We really, I really feel like the first six weeks are so important in school. There's a lot of study, studies that show the first six weeks are so important. And I always feel like the holiday in October is a big sort of touch base for us and reflection on where we are. We had a nice leadership meeting today. And I just, there's so much going on that's positive from a curricular sense and from an academic learning sense that you know, just it's great. We have a lot of momentum going right now. And I'm really happy to say that there's great learning happening in the district. Monday, October 9th, 2023 is recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day by Cohasset Public Schools. If you, if you remember, Indigenous Peoples' Day can be actually recognized at the federal, the state, or the local government level. And this is, some states do recognize it, but in particular, in this case, it is recognized at our local level. And just to bring you back to what happened, there we are in 2020, some familiar faces here, some not so familiar.
I love your freeze frame in particular.
Yeah, I was shocked. That was probably frozen on camera, definitely. And we did have a proclamation, just for everybody remembers, this is 2020. So these students were fourth graders at the time. So my quick math shows me right, I believe they're seventh graders. And it was a wonderful, again, example of student agency and advocacy. This is a group called Teaching from the Shore, which was Ms. Perel, who is a wonderful fourth grade teacher, led this. And they brought to our attention the felt, the fact that they felt that we should assert our ability as a school committee to look at the holiday that happens in October, first of the week of October, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that's, that's what we did. So there's a proclamation there that Mr. McClellan was instrumental in writing up. And that, it's, the plaque sits proudly right now in my office, actually. But it was a nice moment and very indicative of what we hope our students will do. Remember, our vision is to empower students, to improve communities. That's exactly what these fourth grade students did. So that was a really proud moment for me. And I think for Deer Hill, too. I also, we've had a lot of academic recognition. I should mention that the Boston Magazine comes out with a list of top high schools. The, people should know that in this particular year, they used last, not last year's MCAS, the year before's MCAS. So they didn't use our MCAS scores that we're getting accolades for. So, you know, for those who looked at that and said, geez, classes isn't as high as they were on USA News report, folks should know that that is, that data is not up to date. It's, that's where we were in 2000, that's, well, it, the, the measure of MCAS for everyone was 2022's MCAS, not 2023. We're going to do much better when they start putting the 2023 MCAS in there. But our, we have some more accolades here. The platinum is the highest level that you can be recognized in terms of AP. And what they, what they look at is the, a few things, the amount of students within a class who take AP classes, the amount of students who achieve a high four or five on AP, in AP classes. The, they have a whole bunch of percentages. I'll actually show you the breakdown here. Here it is. So it's small, but if you look over here, look at college culture, college credit and college organization, you'll see that we're all platinum in all of those, just to read you the categories, so you know what they are. Oh my. Sorry about that. Someone can move this. So college culture is the percent of students in the graduating class who took an AP exam at any point in high school, regardless of score, to avoid pressure when students take large numbers of APs, only one AP exam per student contributes to the indicator. So you can see we're at 87%, so 93 of our seven students. That, that's huge. College credit, that's the percentage of students in the graduating class who scored three or better on any AP exam in high school, to avoid pressure when students take large numbers of APs, only one AP score of three or higher per student contributes to this indicator. So that's, that puts us at a very good rating. And then although it doesn't look tremendously impressive, it is. Platinum is the highest rating you can get on our college optimization. And what college optimization is defined as is the percentage of students in the graduating class who took five or more AP exams in high school, or at least one exam was taken in ninth or 10th grade. Okay, so that, that's, that's huge. So if you think about it, five, that, that's a high percentage of the class who did that. So anyway, very, very proud of this, these distinctions. And, you know, I want to express my thanks to Principal Scott and his team, and Dr. Scollins, and anyone who worked hard to help, and of course, students. What's that? Students, students first. And, and also the staff who prepared them. So thank you for that.
Dr. Solomon, I can make just an observation on this. And I think it's just important for the community. A lot, we spend a lot of time in this committee, in the schools, focusing on our students that have special needs and need more attention. And I often hear from parents wondering if our schools also pay attention to and focus on students who are high achievers. This shows that our schools do have plenty of room for those students who are high achievers.
Absolutely.
And so we have objective quantitative proof here that, you know, our student, our schools are encouraging those students to excel, are encouraging people to, to, to take AP courses, to, to, to challenge themselves. So our goal as a committee is to expand all, for all of our students. So this is, this shows that, to those parents who are concerned, whether their, their children are appropriately challenged, we do have ways to challenge those students, and we're doing well.
I appreciate that. Yes, I would agree. And again, platinum is the highest distinction. So that's a good thing. Speaking of a good thing, I want to make sure I thank the folks at CEF for raising $32,000 for Cohasset Public Schools at last weekend's Fall Festival at Paragon Parkway and Hall. And there's also a mighty active silent auction that went along with it. And you can see some of the items that, that from last year, but a very, very productive and wonderful event. And I can't thank the folks from CEF enough. Like, it really, they make such a contribution. And thank anyone who contributed to this, because it does go directly to the teaching and learning and facilities of our schools. So very, very thankful for that. And then I just wanted to recognize that there was a poignant, successful candlelight vigil on the 27th for alcohol and drug awareness. And that was, thank you to Safe Harbors. And in future meetings, we will have our, hopefully, our youth ambassadors here, it's the plan, to talk about their focus on alcohol awareness and avoiding some of the use of alcohol amongst our students. So some really good things happening in the community. And I think that's it. Oh, no. Speaking of that, I just wanted to give a shout out to the group that's on the top there that Ms. Noise affectionately termed the Early Bird Club, because they come in every so often and they clean the grounds before school starts. So that's a, just a great example of some great kids making a difference. That's the little things. It shows such pride in our schools. It's really, really nice. And then a fantastic opportunity that we did have Ms. Crimmens, and I can't really speak, and I apologize for that. But we had Ms. Crimmens and another, another individual speak about the, the trip to Guatemala, the Guatemala Service Opportunity, which is happening later in the year. Any high school student interested, it is October 5th, which is tomorrow, at 6:00 PM in room 117. We will have that group come back and talk to us about this hopefully very successful trip. I imagine it will be after it's completed. And that's it. That was it for our, some short updates. And there's a lot happening and a lot of academic PD happening on Friday. Just a reminder to everyone, no school on Friday for our students. And so I will send out an email reminding folks of that. And it's a full PD day and no school, of course, on Monday, as we recognize it as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Sullivan. So that brings us to our next agenda block, E, Teaching and Learning. And I will turn it over to Ms. Barbara Solonka for a special education student services update.
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. Great to be here. Do I have the power to share?
You do not, but I will. I'm glad you have the power to share.
Thank you.
Sorry. You now.
Okay. So a little bit of what I wanted to talk about tonight. One thing is, now that we're kind of a month into school, I know I talked in our last school committee a little bit about kind of my focus areas for the year, but, you know, some of the plans for the Office of Student Services for this year are really centered around our goals and our values on access, equity, and inclusion. And we're really about providing that to all students in a wide variety of ways. In particular, we're going to be focusing, which I will talk about a little bit later, on the new IEP rollout. I know I talked last time that a new IEP was coming out through DESI, that we are adopting it formally for the next school year, that in this school year, we will be doing some training on that. The nice thing about a new IEP coming out, as much as it, you know, puts everybody a little bit on edge, if you will, some nervousness around, you know, what is this going to look like? It, it, I think, is a document, and later on in the school year, I'll be sharing this document and comparing it to the old IEP on screen, so people can see the difference. I think this document really raises our practice, if you will. It really makes us look very thoughtfully and not in a way that is kind of mechanized at all, at all of the questions that we ask about kids. It flushes some of the things that we consider the most important parts of the document out in a much more descriptive and understandable way for families, and really engages with families a lot around, you know, helping their children access their education. And so, so that is a big focus for that this year, and it really will help us improve our practice. Another major focus of, for ours this year is the continuing program development. And I know I talked last month about, you know, some new programming that we're really fleshing out to help us meet students. But I would be remiss if I didn't say to you, and it's really what I want to focus on tonight, is that all of our programming, even our existing programming, we are constantly in development of that, because we are always finding new and better ways to do business, always about improving. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the ways that we do that a little bit later in our slide. But those are some, you know, very much focus areas for me this year. So as always, I, on a monthly basis, present some school committee data to everyone. And what I want to start with is to show you the percentages of our active IEPs in each of our schools, as well as our current disability category percentages. These aren't very far, a little, you know, different than where we left in June, but not terribly far off at all. And, and, and actually, none of the disability categories changed to any measure whatsoever. And then this month, some of the.
Barbara, can I just go back to that slide, just so people know what SLV is?
Yes, a specific learning disability, which could be in the areas of reading, writing, or math, or a combination.
What about children who qualify for services under multiple disabilities? How are those accounted for in these numbers?
So, well, if, if students qualify under the category of multiple disabilities, you can see that that's a very small category, that is usually for some, you know, very high needs and involved children. However, every child who qualifies on an IEP has a primary disability area. Some students have a secondary disability area as well, but this breakdown is hinged on the primary disability area.
Okay. But are those secondary disabilities included in the?
Percentage?
Not in these percentages. This breakdown is just for primary.
Say, for example, a child has an SLD as their primary disability, their other disabilities are not accounted for in, in that.
In this current category, that's correct, because this is for primary disabilities only. They could have a cognitive disability and let's pretend ADHD, but if that's secondary, it's not reflected in this percentage.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? I see that from the middle school to the high school, the percentage drops off. Is that indicative of kids rolling off, the population? Is it arbitrary?
It's primarily indicative of the maturation of kids and their kind of owning of, if you will, independently, which is what we want all of our kids to do, to have that agency of the strategies, the accommodations, the self-awareness and self-advocacy, to really be able to manage their learning on themselves, which is really nice. We do like to see that. And, and that's usually what that is indicative of. Yeah, it is good news. All right. So if we were to look at the month of September and how busy we were this month, you can see at the elementary level, we had five annual reviews, six at the secondary level. If you remember, reevaluations and initial evaluations are the meetings that involve some formal testing. We had one reevaluation at the elementary level, in which the student continued to be eligible, and one at the out-of-district level. We have one initial evaluation at the elementary level. And if you look down at the next box, and you remember, we break out where that referral came from. The referral for that particular student who was found eligible for services came through our NTSS role. If you look at the secondary level, you can see we had one initial evaluation. And if you drop down to the next box, the eligibility, that student was found eligible, and the area, the referral source area, came from a parent who, that student is not a Cohasset Public School student. They are a private school student. They are eligible for our services in testing, should their parents be concerned about them. And in fact, this student qualified, but they do not currently go to Cohasset Public Schools. And there was one independent evaluation at the secondary level that we reviewed. Oh, that's not. I was talking about some of, you know, the continuing program development, some of the things that we're doing with our staff to continue to grow our current programming. One of the things that we did this fall, which is new, is that I actually conducted a school bus training with the drivers and monitors who are on our school buses. It was about.
Mrs. Solonka was not driving the bus.
I was not driving the bus. We were sitting in a conference room, just like this, with Ray at home with the drivers. And what I conducted was I conducted a training for them on things like information which would ensure safe transport of students, particularly students with disabilities. And the things we talked about was, we talked about things like appropriate behavior management techniques, effective communication with students, understanding behaviors that may be related to specific disability categories. And when things present themselves, how to best address that, especially when you are driving a very busy bus. And that these really topics don't simply apply to students with disabilities. They really do apply to all students, and that these practices really can be well-used with all kids, but particularly needed oftentimes for our students with disabilities, depending upon what they are. It was great to be able to sit down and answer their questions and go through this PowerPoint that I had. And I think it was very well-received, and it's something that we're going to be continuing to do on an annual basis. So, so that was a nice new addition to kind of our staff training. Another staff training that we have coming up on October 17th is that the six chairs and I are going to the DESI Train the Trainer on the new IEP process, so that we can bring that back to district and work on that then all year with our staff, as I said. As you know, we have Teaching and Learning Alliance for our general educators and special educators in the area of reading, but we have expanded that into our pre-K programming this year. And we're very excited about that. And actually, what we have going on, and I'll have Dr. Scollins jump in with me, is that we actually have a pre-K curriculum consortium on the South Shore. We have partnered with TLA, and so it is not just us. It was put out to many of the South Shore school systems, and Plymouth is partnering with us to share the cost and share the Teaching and Learning Alliance with us, and we'll be sharing the presentations with us. There are going to be a fall workshop series, a winter cycle, and a spring curriculum cycle. And we're going to really be looking at very inquiry-based pre-K curriculum units and doing a lot of very specific work on that. It's wonderful to have another town coming to work on this, because we'll be able to see each other's practices and learn from each other, as well as from some of the experts we have coming in to do this professional development with us.
Exactly. And in addition to this, these workshop series are actually going to be shared out with districts and even private preschool programs. So other programs can participate. So there is a cost sharing between Plymouth and I, and Cohasset. But in addition, the funding that comes in for those will help defray some of our costs for Plymouth and ourselves when we're looking at this. So we're really excited about it. We're a fairly small program. So anytime we can get our teachers with more teachers, it makes for a better collaboration and a better product. So they've done, TLA has done a lot of work around preschool. They did all four bend Texas, which is massive. So they wrote curriculum with them. And so they've also worked in Boston. And so there's a lot of programming that has occurred that is really best practices for students in pre-K. So we're really excited about it.
And they've already come in and met our pre-K staff.
Formal audit, and it's, yeah, we're really excited about it. It'll be nice.
It's great news. Yeah. So we were very excited to expand and develop our pre-K program, and now we're more excited to kind of take this. Some of the other things that we're doing in terms of ongoing consults, as always, in, as we continue to expand our co-teaching, Seaside Consultants work with us. We have an annual contract with them to come in and work with our teachers, and they continue to do that both with our new partnerships at the Osgood, but also with our existing partnerships at the middle school and the high school. We have social, emotional, clinical consults with, for our staff. We have done work already this year in terms of vertical alignment, where we are having staff from, let's say, the middle school go down to the Deer Hill School, look at the programming there, look at the students and some of the programs there, and look at the ways that practices happen actually, you know, live and in the moment, and take some knowledge back then about students who are coming up, what's been, you know, working for them and with them, and how can they get ready and incorporate that. And we're continuing to do that, you know, with our different programs and different grade levels. And we even, you know, encourage and have had people go out to other schools and take a look at some of the practices and the programming in other districts and come back. And people come in and observe some of ours. And all that is, just provides us with such a wealth of information and practical experience. And I'm very excited to, you know, really work on that this particular year. I did want to talk a little bit about CPAC. On September 28th, we were fortunate enough to have our meet and greet coffee. We had it about 1:00 in the afternoon, and we had a nice turnout with people who maybe before had not come to a CPAC meeting. And so that was, that was very exciting. Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins and I were there. And as was, you know, our CPAC board. And it was really just a great meet and greet. Our next meeting is going to be on October 12th at 11:00 AM. It is going to be both live and virtual, so that if you are unable to come in person and you want to participate virtually, you are able to do that, and you'll be hearing more about that from Also, Brian, and Sarah Davis. And, and we're very excited to get that rolling this year. My, my last item for tonight is the dyslexia screener information. And we wanted to talk to you a little bit about what's going on with that. And I think, actually, I'm going to scroll through a couple of these, perhaps to this slide. And we can talk a little bit about this. So as of 2022.
Zoom in just a little bit. So.
Maybe.
Hit the plus, that whole plus right there, the plus.
Over to the right.
I'm sorry.
You hit the plus. Oh, that's better.
How's that?
Look at that.
All right. So Massachusetts requires literary screenings of all K through three students using state-approved screeners. Our particular screeners, and we'll talk a little bit about these later, are the Dibbles 8 and the I-Ready. And really, what we're looking at right now is obviously, we are in the screening mode. There are obviously some things that we do for prevention. We incorporate Hagerty, we incorporate foundations, and we. We incorporate Haggerty, we incorporate foundations, and we use those things also if we need to go into an intervention mode. But for tonight, to talk about the screenings, what I really want to be able to share with you is the DIBELS 8 is one of our approved meets expectations screens that we use K to 8. And these are all of the areas that are particularly assessed in K to 2. And it comes with progress monitoring forms and it comes with sharing out to families and so on and so forth.
But this is meets expectation. So this is off of DESI's website. What they've done is they have let us know which screeners are meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations and not meeting expectations. So DIBELS 8 is something we've always used, so we've stuck with that for meeting expectations. But we also know it's only one, one data point, good one, but it's still, it's a screener. And so the iReady diagnostic is also in there, but it's partially meets expectations. So, so we use both because it doesn't cover everything, iReady doesn't cover everything that DESI would expect us to, which DIBELS 8 does, but also gives us another data point to look at kids. And so, and they do line up nicely so that we can look at their phonological awareness, phonetic awareness. We can look at some of those thesis to see what's going on for students. These are just two of the things that we use. We have other assessments that we will look at also that we do with kids. There's a, sometimes we'll use a rapid automated automated naming for students to see what they do. And that is in, I believe it's in the iReady one, but we'll, we have another one that we use. So if students don't necessarily, they show up a little on us, our, our charts and we're, they're, they're not where we'd like them to be. We might use that, especially with our kindergarteners, because they don't necessarily know all their letters yet. So these other things that they use pictures and colors will give us where they are at, which is really helpful. So that's, those are the two screeners that we use.
And how does, how does a student get triggered for, does everybody go through screeners or do they?
Everybody does, right?
All the screeners or do you select?
So they'll do both of these K through, everybody, so DIBELS 8 is K through 5. iReady is also K through 5. When we are looking at dyslexia though, those two fall in the guidelines for us to use for our dyslexia screener for K through 3, because that's where you want, that's where we're going to find those kids. If those students come significantly below grade level, our expectations, then we may do some additional assessments, which would be that the RAN, the Rapid Automated Naming, I keep calling it RAN, but you're not going to know what it is, so I'm going to tell you what it is, you do now. And so that will be helpful. Or there's some other screeners that we will use to determine if in fact they are at risk. And if they're at risk, then that's going to trigger what's the next step for those students. So it's a kindergarten level. It's all in class for the first half of the year, because all kindergarteners come from all different backgrounds. And so we know where they fall on our assessments, but we want to make sure that we're triaging them in class. Because, you know, sometimes it's their first experience in school, sometimes they've had multiple experiences, we don't know. And so we will have reading specialists in kindergarten, we also, and they'll be doing intervention work with students. Also on top of that, we have our therapists OT, our facial therapist, our physical therapist, our speech and language pathologist. They're in there also, maybe working with students who are on IPs, but they also are in working with all of the students. So they kind of keep eyes on all. In January, when we have our second round of intervention, that's when you might have pull out for kindergarten. Kindergarten, first through third, that's different. It depends on what the needs of the student is and what they show up with and their needs, whether they're falling in the K3 when we're looking at dyslexia or if they have a reading, if they're having some challenges with reading, that will determine what kind of support they'll get, whether it's a reading specialist that's pushing in, reading specialist pushing out. Both Ozgood and Deer Hill are really trying to do more push in so that they can make sure that those students that have been identified are getting what they need, but also making sure that other students are getting what they need. Because sometimes kids need support, not all the time, but they, there may be a concept or something they're struggling with. We want to make sure they're getting in, in the moment support for whatever they have going on. So, so that's where we're at. So parents will be notified if they, if their children are significantly below benchmark. And then they'll be given an opportunity to see what the plan is and ask any question. That happens within 30 days of the assessments.
And we do write the parent letters to go.
So we did send a letter out for kindergarten families. One of the things that we noticed when we did the the DIBELS and the iReady data, the DIBELS rate, information for the kindergarteners. When we saw their reports, we were surprised at how much red there was. So, because it was 40%, which was a trigger for us, because we've never seen that number before. It's usually around 15% that will fall in red, which means that they are significantly below benchmark. So we went back and looked at the timeline for which we gave the assessment. We gave it about three and a half, four weeks earlier than we did the last year. And that's significant amount of time for a kindergarten. So, so we really, we thought we were, we really thought we were doing so well because we had identified our dates last spring, so we were going to hit the ground running, make sure that we assess kids so that we were on top of it. Never really even thought about how much of an impact that might have on kindergartners. So, so we sent a letter out to families just to let them know because we knew that parents were going to get letters that would show that there was more red than we expected. So, and that just made us really think about what we're going to be doing for those kids too. So we'll be looking at them over the next course of like the next month and a half, just to make sure. So more kids may get that screener than typically would have, but we just want to make sure we're not missing anybody. And we'll adjust next year. And when I talked to other districts, they actually push their kindergarten sometimes till October, November, before they do their first screener. I'm not sure I want to go that late, but we're, we're going to talk about that with our dyslexia team. We're going to bring the committee back together this year and talk about it. And then letters are going out tomorrow, so families know that family reports are available. There'll be two letters. One will talk about the K through 3 dyslexia screening process. And then the other letter just really talks about DIBELS and iReady. If it's K through 5 and K through 8 is just the iReady. And they are going to be accessed through Aspen. We're not going to reprint them up this year. So really excited to be able to do that. So if you got a bus pass, that's exactly where your report's going to be. So we'll send that information out in the letter. It's very simple. Let me find it. It's at the bottom of the letter. There it is. So, oh, I can't share. I was like so excited to share this with you. All right, thanks. So, so I have directions written in the letter, so you actually have the written directions, so you know how to do it with the link to get into Aspen. But then if, then there's just a graphic, we support. Lisi has been amazing. She's the person who said we can put these in Aspen, you don't have to print them out. So parents always know where they are, which is so helpful. And we send them home, but sometimes they get lost. And so I think that this is a really nice way to be able to keep everybody's records in the same spot. The one thing that I do want to say that Jerrilyn Alarg told me to say to everybody is make sure you click on your child's name. You won't be able to see it if you don't click on your child's name. So that's why it's in bold print when you see your letter. So those letters are going out tomorrow. And then at 12 o'clock on Friday, you'll be able to see your family reports. Yeah, so it's just, it just makes it easier for, certainly saves on trees, so. So that's what we have, yes.
Anything else, Ms. Swanka?
No.
Any questions from the committee from Ms. Swanka on the special education update?
I have just two points, Jared, that I wanted to address.
Absolutely.
Dr. Scollins's remarks. Dr. Scollins, regards to the kindergarten assessment letter that went out. You would sort of clarify, which was helpful, but just want to note that we had conducted those assessments early and actually had discussed this in an effort to be responsive to district requests for data. What I think we found, which is, which happens when you're doing something for the first time, is that it may have been a little bit on the early side.
For kindergarten.
For kindergarten, in order to respond to community needs. So we may have to reevaluate whether we do in the same timeline next year. That said, the, I saw them, even though I don't have a kindergarten, kindergarten student, it was sent to me. And I do think that the messaging was maybe left a little bit to be desired because it read as though the results were because the kids started earlier, not because the assessment was given earlier than past years. So it's, it read as though, oh, because your kids started before Labor Day. This is, this is what, this contributed to the problem. So that didn't make a lot of sense. So I just wanted to sort of reply that because it makes a lot more sense for the reasons that you just described.
Yeah.
I thought I mentioned that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
We clap on that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Two things, anything else?
Well, those are two things wrapped up in the one. Got it. Thanks.
Any other questions coming for Ms. Swanka or Dr. Scollins? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to Dr. Leslie Scollins for academic initiatives and updates.
Great, so. So just want to let you know about where we're at with our MCAS analysis. With our new director of data curriculum and evaluation, Rock Roberts. We are working with all the staff to do a dive into the MCAS. Principals did an overview and shared the materials with their staff. And on the PD day in September on the 22nd, we'll be going to all the schools and/or grade level departments, depending on what fits for them. So for example, even though Ozgood staff not participate in administering MCAS, it's important for them to know the data. So we've always shared that with them. So we will be going to them in December, the very, their staff in December, to share with them the overview of, of MCAS. We'll be going to Deer Hill this weekend, next week, working during common planning time with grade levels and working with them, looking at the growth of students, some item analysis, but more importantly, the curriculum, because there's different reports that we generate. They know how to look at the item analysis, they know how to do all that because we're doing it over time. Now we're moving to that next level of looking at the impact on curriculum. And so that will give us a deeper conversation to look at where are the areas that we have strength and where are areas that we know we need to work on, opportunities for us. And so we'll also be working with the middle school the week of October 23rd. We'll be doing a deep dive with math and reading, English departments to look at theirs and then working with the high school principal and department chairs for October and early November to be able to get to them. That will allow me to then, with Rock, do you, give you an MCAS analysis in November. At least November 1st will be our analysis. And then on the 6th of December, we'll give you the action plan as to what are the outcomes of all of our MCAS. We're happy overall with the MCAS data, but that doesn't mean that we're not looking for things that we need to work on and to improve. So, and they're already jumping on things already. I know that they, one of the focuses is again, writing. So I know at Deer Hill, they're already working on how they're going to address that. The middle school's doing a lot of work around, that was their focus actually on their September 22nd MCAS analysis board. And I know that all the departments, in particular, the social studies department, 6 through 12, Jim Wills has been doing a lot on how to, how to make sure that we're writing and integrating the writing practices that we really want kids to be thinking about, how to make them really thoughtful and able to, to express themselves in written word. So we're excited about that. Our hope is that we'll also be able to put the MCAS reports into Aspen. So I'm working with Lisa for Lisi, she had to purchase a device, a little thing to do. So she said she has it, so I don't have a date for you yet for those, but those will be going out relatively soon. It's just a matter of making sure the technology's up and running for that. See, we already talked about our family reports, I showed you that. You know about professional development on Friday. Focus at the elementary level will be readers workshop and literacy. And then across middle school and high school, there'll be work for content area where they are looking at some of our new programming, such as Lester of Math, they have some training in the morning and then some collaborative work. The department chairs are working to, whether it's some of the action plan items that we came up with for math and arts or working on the curriculum guide work that Rock Roberts is district. So safety care, what we have also for staff on Friday. So we have a full day and we're excited about that. The, we had, we have some more professional development also with iReady for next week for our new teachers are getting training as well as training for the new My Path, which is the digital platform that we use for math and reading at the elementary level. And then the wellness committee met today, which was exciting. And we're looking for more community family members, so anyone interested out there, please contact me. Our next meeting is January 17th and we're in a self, a self-study again, you have to do it every three years. So we are back in that this year, so we're looking for people to participate and do the self-study with us around our health and wellness. Probably more, but that's what I have for today.
Committee questions or comments for Dr. Scollins?
I have a quick one, and it's totally of practical nature. I love that all these test resorts, results are going to be within Aspen. How long are they going to be archived in that system? Okay, so you will always be able to access it, unlike the report cards. Or at one point, it seemed like report cards were only there for 12 months.
Oh, and had printed and put into your file.
That a parent couldn't access it again.
I'm going to check on, okay. It's, it's a different process, so because it goes under documents, progress reports are in their other own workflow, for lack of a better term. But the, the reports go under documents, so that can stay.
Yeah, that's amazing. It's amazing and amazing if you can continually access those, that material.
Yeah.
Would be great.
Right, so, and we'll always have the reports in our files anyway. But yeah, that's a great question. I mean, it's a whole different piece of Aspen. I know, I don't have a tech thing go for that, but yeah.
Great question. Neither do I, so I accept that answer. It's quite good.
Dr. Scollins, a couple of things that I'm, I'm interested in. We are doing some new stuff with curriculum throughout the schools with the Lester of Math being an illustrative example. And then I'm also aware from our, I was at the middle school open house and learning about the, the pilot program for the ancient histories, geography.
Oh, investigating history?
And so I'm curious as to at some point when you, we've kind of digested some of these and gotten some information and feedback. If you could come back to the committee and talk about the things that we've done, the things we've piloted and what we've learned and what works and what doesn't, so that we can get a kind of idea of where we think we're going with curriculum.
Yeah, I would love to do that. I think I, I really want the teachers to have some experiences so they can give us some feedback. And the investigative history, we are doing the one unit, although I had some fifth grader teachers ask me if it was possible if they could do two and had I, would I be able to order the materials I already had, so I'm using that grant money. But we are part, because it's part of a pilot through DESI, and I sent a letter out to all the families that we are working with Tufts University also. So we'll be getting feedback from them about what's happening. And our teachers are going to give feedback back to DESI and to Tufts around how does this work? Howard, what's the student impact, parent impact? So there's going to be a lot of feedback. So I, I'd be thrilled to be able to come back and talk.
Maybe something for like a January, February timeframe or when you've had a chance.
Yeah, I think when the math teachers, yeah, and I want the math teachers to be able to come and talk about it with you. Similar to when we had Ms. Betsy, well, this is, this is coming now, Ms. Moser at the time, come in and do the readers workshop. I think that's really nice too, so you can ask questions, see the nation. So I'd love to be able to have that happen. I want to make sure that they have their feet under them. So yeah, I'd love to do that.
Appreciate it. All right, well, that'll close us off to teaching, learning. We'll move on to agenda block F, budget, resources and governance. I have a item on food service, two items in that block, food service and transportation. I believe Dr. Scollins turned it over to Mrs. Anom and our director of operations.
Will I have share ability?
Do you know, and you go in a second. You do know. You do know.
So the first first topic I'll just touch base on is food service. So so everyone knows we are looking for a new director of food service and food service and operation to. I mean, operations, yeah, forget to give away a little bit of my stuff. That's really all I have on the food service. The second piece is on the transportation and I just wanted to show.
But before we do get to the transportation, I just want to give a quick preamble. I know that throughout the community, the parking of the buses has been an issue and lots of people have given us feedback about Deer Hill and some concerns. For this committee, I want everyone to know this is not a vote item that we're doing anything. We're not moving forward. This is an update for the community. This is an update showing that we are moving forward. The issue of our parking buses doesn't go away. We still have to park our buses. And so we are trying to responsibly figure out what to do. And this is one of the options that we have on the table. But I just wanted to stress for people who are watching at home and just for this committee, that what we're doing here does not suggest that we have decided on anything. The committee is not being asked to approve anything. This is an update for which direction we're going. So with that preamble, the sonal.
Thank you. This is just a snapshot of what Maryland engineering has put together. You can see there's room for the buses here. There is a small building here. Ideally, you know, it's it's here tonight on the agenda, just because it was the next step is to put it to put forward to conservation one month and get their approval and it's strictly on storm water. It has nothing to do with anything else other than storm water. So I think it it had prematurely gotten on the agenda. And we pulled it off the agenda of conservation until we had a discussion here to decide if that's, you know, do we want to at least move forward to the next step, which would be having Maryland engineering present to conservation to just get the storm water.
And this is that we could have a much more robust conversation at a future school committee meeting if the chair desires. But this is just more of a socialization of it. So the folks know it's still it's still in the in the works and there will be no surprises if they see it somewhere else in the community.
Right. And that was why I want to talk about it because once it goes to conservation, they notify their butters. Their butters would notify them to make sure that was truly the direction we want to go is just have conservation look at it. We have, as Lynn said, we have multiple options that we're looking at of where to put bus parking. We really don't know which direction we're going to go. So we're just trying to look at all the options and slowly move in all directions until we come up with a final more concrete plan.
It's just just to kind of put more of a fine point on it. So what's happened is that the town of Cohasset has has applied for and received a project review for storm water management for the proposed parking lot at Deer Hill. This is a very fulsome report, talks about storm water and not anything else. So if you like storm water, it's a great read. But it will be at some point presented to the conservation committee. And so, you know, we wanted to give the committee the opportunity to ask questions. Again, we're not, we're not voting on it. We're not approving it. But if you do see it show up on conservation, it's just the continued process of us evaluating what our options are. Because if the conservation committee looks at this storm water plan and says, no, you cannot do it. That's important information for us to figure out what our next steps are. But I think that's the key takeaway from this presentation. With that, I'll open it up to the committee, Mr. Carr.
Can I just men, I should just mention, especially for people watching at home. So Cohasset has one of the strongest bywater stormwater bylaws. And so we're, the town is not dissimilar to a private owner. You know, so anybody that is trying to do something would have to go for storm water review if they meet certain criteria. So this is very, very normal. This is very pro forma. The town goes through this for many, many projects. This is just one of the possibilities. So this is just our storm water bylaw working very, very well. And the custodial that are the conservation committee. And so this is a very normal process when the town wants to think about projects generally, the first stop is something like this.
Any other questions or comments from the committees? Great. While we're on transportation, I guess, Ms. Owen and Dr. Collins. I know last year we had lots of staffing issues. I've heard nothing but positive things about transportation this year. Just wanted to get a pulse read from you about how transportation is going in good perspective.
I'll defer to that. I mean, I would say from my view, we were always, I mean, transportation is one of those things. It's such a consumer service model. We're trying to adjust and help and and also keep our routes expedient, safe. And, you know, we're, so it's a constant project. But I would say overall, things are going very well. Definitely, we were in a much more secure situation with the drivers we have in terms of the amount of drivers. We we don't anticipate disruptions in our bus routes, our sports routes are going fine.
New buses.
New buses, beautiful new buses. They're running well. And, you know, our local motion, our transportation for our MEKO students are is going really well. So knock on wood, that was a major focus for us this year. And I think it's it's going very well. But I'll turn it to you. There might be some finer details.
Dr. Sullivan hit hit most of my point. But yes, we have eight eight brand new diesel buses, not flat nose. The drivers weren't impressed with the flat nose. It's harder for them to to drive. So we went back to the old style buses. We also have first student is applying as well as one bus right now. It's a backup just in case. We run short on buses or if a bus breaks down, we are expecting the electric bus to come hopefully by December. When the electric bus comes, we will then terminate the lease with first student if that's the direction we want to go. We have plenty of drivers right now. We have two, two drivers in training, ready to take their tests. We also have two spare drivers that have been busy almost every day doing field trips and sports rents. So driver wise, we are, we are good to go. You know, we still have an adult there for substitutes, but those are very hard to find. But what Dr. Sullivan said, it's knock on wood, it's been very quiet. I haven't, I haven't heard any, any complaints, no, no, the route's not long.
We're in a much more secure situation than we were in previous years. And that's, that's the bottom line, really. Thank you for your, thank you for your work on that. Absolutely. Any other questions or comments from the committee? We'll move on to our next agenda block, agenda of G, community relations and communications. And Dr. Sullivan, we have on here a potential page, which I remember talking with you when we set the agenda up. But yeah, therein ends my recollection of the.
Well, it it was brought to our attention via our finance facilities committee that it would be a nice move to have a donation page on our website. So we did some research and looked at some towns in the in the area and even further out to see how they were setting that up. And I don't think we have it on there yet, Ms. Owen, but I think it's it's, when do we anticipate putting it on there?
I have, I have a draft that I could share. Sure. We haven't put it on the website yet. Back to my zone.
It's a means of folks who might want to contribute to class public schools doing so via this page.
So this is, this is the draft of what the website would look, look, look like on our, on our website.
Mine is graphics, which will put in there.
So can we, can we please use the click arrow? That is spectacular.
So I mean, that's, that's basically what you'll first see. It will go along with it. It just says, you know, donate. It it talks about whether it's tax deductible. You can choose the amount. You can put your name. You don't have to. And then there'll be a dropdown menu here. You can see where there'll be. You can choose the programs. And we'll have a list of different programs like the Guatemalan trip. Could possibly be on there. I think we are doing something similar with that right now. Or you, there's a, there's another, just a box where you can donate to something of your choice. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. It would run right through our automatic my school bucks payment, payment system. So.
In all caps, it would be, would still have to be approved by this committee.
Yeah, they're all, you know, all items will be beautifully accepted by the school committee after the donations have been accepted. You know, they'll receive a formal thank you letter. They don't have to, they don't have to go through this donation base. They can still gift us donations and checks the way they have been for years. But this is just another option, another way to to donate, if you'd like to donate.
Something just front and center and easy.
We did, we did discuss this in the subcommittee. We thought this was a great idea. This just allows us to, does not in no way do anything to exchange the Cohasset Education Foundation, the work that they do. But this is gives an avenue for people who want to make a donation that can. And then we would Dr. Sullivan's right, we would have to review that as a committee. But it just, it gives another tool and toolbox for us to be able to take these donations.
Personally, I think it's a great idea to remove any sort of precautions from people deciding to give us money. If we make it easy, maybe that will help. Any questions? This isn't a matter for vote, but want to make sure we have enough to have input from the full committee.
I'd like to say something. I just want to thank the administrators for listening to us in these meetings and getting it done. I gotta be, I gotta be honest with you. This is something I've been trying to promote for the last five years to see it like come to fruition. It's exciting. And and just to know that you're listening is is not only productive, but it's, 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 it's exciting. This is something that, you know, that we're a society that wants to give. And this is a way to give. Like this is just specific. We can put specific items out there that you have passion to. Some, some like school boards or uniforms for kids or, you know, the lights need to be fixed in the auditorium, you know, donate, whatever we want to do, we can be able to, you know, find your passion because people gives them the opportunity to to make a difference. And this is again, Guatemalan trip or something that kids can't afford or somebody couldn't go because of financial strains. People in this area to be able to give back. It's just wonderful to see. And I just wanted to thank you all.
You're welcome. And thank you for your advocacy, Dr.
Great. So guys, one, one question tied to agenda item. We'll have a moment. We have a lot of capital needs coming up for the schools. Is there a maximum that people could donate through this portal? So if you have a few extra million lying around, and you have access to the internet, this is your, your tool.
I'd probably bring that gift to fight the clinic.
All of them are coming in front of the committee, but definitely that one. And we would certainly send the thank you letter, just to just throwing it out there.
For sure.
Would it make any sense to add some language around the part about goods and services, in kind gifts to prevent someone showing up with a really good intention to give that actually isn't helpful to the school and may in fact cause the school some. I I think, I, I, having worked in this domain before, sometimes donors have things that they would like to give to school with really wonderful intentions. However, it may not be something that is actually beneficial to the district or have value to the district.
We addressed that with getting approved to the school. So everything has to be approved. So we're basically saying, we're taking your gift in, but it's not approved until we all. And we were thinking about, because that's a good question. We were thinking about like, kind of, and we're hoping we have so many gifts, we just package it in through one vote. But, you know.
But having said that, there was suggested language in the, you know, or not to say that you have to, but if anyone has the suggested language to put in the on the page, that'd be actually really helpful. But Mr. Kerry is correct. We would absolutely.
Or see what happens.
Can I mention one other thing we talked to the subcommittee about? Because it came up in the prioritization list that we had in the prior meeting here. I feel folks had to look into it, but was that we'd heard that there was a new program about the potential of being able to have some grand money if we could repair or replace the roof here. And I'd say that that is in the works, that Desi and, which is a state agency and the Clean Energy Center, meant a quasi-public agency, are standing up something called the Green School Works Program. It's a combination of some other things. They'll have some application process and timeline. They are going to communicate with administrators rather soon. I'm glad to see the town is already aware of it. Their consultant is working on this process already. So I think this is a great, another great thing. So we talked about it in the subcommittees.
That has great potential, particularly with that timeline on our roofs for for all schools. So there's, there's a lot of potential there for the alternative energy.
Well, not only is that great timing from that perspective, but it's also great timing from an agenda perspective because we're going to roll into reports from committees and subcommittees. This is, this is, this is perfect. Right, right there. So, so that was facilities finance. Any other report from facility of finance?
No, that's, that's it for today.
I do have a liaison. There is, and I'm hoping to go this year is the National School Association as a an event every year they have it. And it's to get, it's for school board members, superintendents. And it's on Cape Cod. It's November eighth to November tenth. I was hoping to go because there's a lot of, there's a lot of good classes that you can take referring to equity. And it was also what I, what I was really interested to is besides the lunches. It's a, so this, it, it, the, the exhibits. So basically have all the vendors coming down. So even if anybody can just make that particular thing, especially with food services, because there'll be a whole host of shopwells and all those folks will be there. There's also, it's just a whole room of that. And then there's also, there's a class on athletics, on how to make sure that every kid's playing and how it can affect kids' learning and social emotional. So there is a list on the their website. So I was hoping to register for that. So I would like to invite anyone else to join me. It could be a day trip or it could be a weekend trip, a weekday trip. But I plan on attending. I actually work down there anyway. So it's November eighth to November tenth. It's Massachusetts School Association.
I'll have Jennifer look at that too.
Yeah. So if we could ask her to register me, that would be great if anybody else wants to.
I'll have her send us some information to the, to the committee.
Yes.
Any other reports from subcommittees or liaisons? Subcommittee or liaison period. But it's good. We've got a lot going on at the beginning of the year. So that closes off with community relations and communications. And we'll now go into the kind of the school committee governance. We do have one topic not reasonably anticipated by the chair. That is, that is me. And I'm going to Dr. Solomon, are you able to put the text on the screen of the warrant? I know you reported it to me as well. While you're looking at that, I'll just kind of re give the the background here. So I alluded just a moment ago, this capital needs that our schools have. Those are represented by potential roofing needs, potential window needs. You know, we we talked about at our town, annual town meeting, our permanent temporary tarp, which ironically has been replaced by a more permanent, less temporary tarp.
They're like, yeah.
But it is still there in somewhat, in a somewhat forlorn and unhappy way to solve a leaking problem associated with some, some air handlers. We have hot classes that, you know, get up to like the mid eighties for our kids because we don't have an air conditioning system. So we have lots of capital needs to think about for our schools. In view of those, the town of Cohasset has pushed forward for, and with the assistance of the the schools as well, has pushed forward for a, what we call stabilization fund. The stabilization fund will be in the amount of $1.5 million annually. It will be a source of funding for capital needs of the schools. It will be in addition to and not a replacement of the the current capital budget process. But the expectation is that the big ticket items that we have needs for would be funded out of this stabilization fund, thereby taking off some of the pressure on the town's main capital, capital budgeting process. thereby taking off some of the pressure on the town's main capital, capital budgeting process. So last night at the select board meeting, the select board approved a set of language that will show up on the warrant. And this has been, this has been voted by, voted on by advisory and capital and will also be noting the school committee's vote on this language. And so I'm going to, do you have it?
I do.
Perfect. That was good. So this is an item that will require a committee vote. What we're going to do is we're going to put the language on the screen and we'll just read it into the record just so we, we have it. And you can see then below that, the informational summary will, is the school committee is one of these, one of these items that will show what the vote was at the school committee and whether we, we voted to support this warrant article or not. So I'll just read it out loud, just into the record. This will be at Article 11 to see if the town will vote pursuant to general laws, chapter 40, section 5B, to create a special purpose stabilization fund for the repair and maintenance of schools to be known as the School Capital Stabilization Fund. And further, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of 1.5 million to said School Capital Stabilization Fund, provided however that no sums shall be expended hereunder unless and until the town has voted to assess an additional 1.5 million in real estate and personal property taxes for said purpose pursuant to the provisions of chapter 59, section 21C of the Massachusetts General Laws, known as proposition two and a half, or take any other action relative there to. So before we, before I request a, a motion or a vote, I'll open up the floor to see if there are any questions, comments, thoughts. And on this one, because this is somewhat important, I'll just go around and roll call Mr. Kearney.
I'm very impressed in how some of the town people putting this thing, putting this together. It's a, it's a, it's a small start to what we really need. To be honest, it's, it's really not a lot of money, but it's, it's a start and I appreciate the start. Hopefully more things will come. It's, it's, it's totally necessary. And I, I think that as a community that we should come out and support it. I'm grateful for the people that are taking the time out of their own lives to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Carr.
One of the things Paul touched on, I think, is that it is, there's a number of topics on this fall town meeting related to and helpful to the schools. So I think it's good for us to get the word out about this kind of stuff. People that go to town meeting do care how other groups vote on stuff. So I think it's important that we do vote on this and show it in the warrant. Sometimes scheduling won't allow it. So sometimes you don't know how other groups are voting on something until they vote right before the meeting. But as distributed to the group, this is a very helpful tool to be able to say, hey, the schools have reviewed this and we have, and we've talked about this in subcommittee and other things. So I think this is a great, I think this is a great opportunity for the town and I hope that we support.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Ms. Leskey.
I'm also in full support, having been a former member of the school facilities committee and appreciate the work of everyone to putting this together. This, the, the laundry list of items needed to bring our school buildings up to code and, and up to, up to sort of a reasonable standard so that they're well cared for is long and expensive. And I think this will, will help in, in tackling some of that, those maintenance issues. So I will be in full support. I hope our town comes out in full support of this.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Leskey. Mr. McCollum.
I only have a general comment. I'll leave till we get to the other one as well. Doing this individually, right?
Yes.
So.
And so from my perspective, let's, we can just go back up. We'll do this individually. So I, I am, I've been involved with town and, and in full support of this. In fact, there was a, I was at this, this town community gathering and my main thrust, the point was is that we've already, the bill's already come to give. This is just, this is not a question of whether we spend, this is a question of how we spend it. And this will allow us to spend responsibly and address needs as they come up rather than wait until they become acute and crisis. So with that, I will entertain a motion to indicate the school committee's support of the Article 11 School Special Purpose Stabilization Fund as read into the record presented on the screen here. Motion made by Ms. McCollum, motion seconded by Mr. Carr. We'll just go around the room. Mr. Kearney.
Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Leskey. Aye.
Mr. McCollum. Dyle. Aye. So the motion unanimously passes. The school submit, committee have by a vote of five to nothing votes to support the Article 11 School, School Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. So the next article.
Just before, could somebody send that along to Kathy Baugh and get some, just the language?
Absolutely.
So we can have it for a minute.
Yep. I'll send it right here, Kathy.
Thank you.
So the next article that also relates to the school is the School Environmental Site Environmental Insight Testing Analysis. This is another item that will be on the warrant that the select board has requested the school committee assess its support thereof. So I'll read the article and then we can talk about it. The article itself is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate our transfer from available funds, the sum of $400,000 for the purposes of paying the cost of site evaluations for Cohasset Middle High School, as well as the financial options and considerations for the repair, addition, renovation or replacement of said building to, and/or to take any action relative there to. So this is an item that has been front and foremost of our committee for the past couple of years, at least since I've been on this committee. We recognize that this building in particular is an aging building and is at the probable end of its useful life. It has some significant capital needs coming up, but more importantly, from my perspective, the academic and pedagogical techniques have evolved beyond the capabilities of the, of this building. The building is not laid out in a way that supports modern teaching. Some of the things that we talked about with Dr. Scollins of new curriculum and new ways of teaching students. And so we are looking to see how we can best address these needs and the needs of our students. And one way to do this is to assess whether or not and how to do a significant renovation or replacement of this building. And this study would be a fur, in furtherance of that. Just to front run the, the concern, this is in parallel to and not replacement of our application to the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority for financial assistance and support in a significant renovation or replacement project. This, as I've said in a select board meeting back in March, is kind of shining lights on what our options are so that we know how best to distribute the funds that we have, make the investments that we can, and then, you know, do it in a responsible way. So that's the background. I'll open it up to the committee for discussion. Again, I'll go around and do, do in orders. So Mr. Kearney.
I'm in full support. I would like to say I'd like to take 400,000 and put it into the school itself. You know, I, I, I definitely know that we need some kind of plan for the future. And this is, this is a plan for the future to basically tell us what we have, what we can do and so that the questions and answers get answered. Am I correct? Because where, where would we put another building? Where would, how would the whole thing work? And I think this study will show us there. You know, quite frankly, I think, again, I think it's a lot of money to spend on it. If you don't have the right, I mean, if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna do a renovation, let's make sure we do it right. And not have our kids trailers or, but you know, we just didn't know what we're doing. So this is proactive way to figure out what we're gonna do for the future. So I'm in full support and I thank the members that have worked on this.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Carr.
I think this is a great idea. I, um, so just sort of to put into perspective, especially for those of whom that might be watching. Generally, the town of Cohasset handles big money issues at the annual town meeting. It's in the spring. You see some of these items on here because the time is here and the time is now. This is not a new topic. It has been heavily discussed, heavily reviewed by other committees and including the school building group. And so this is just the next step in the cog of us pursuing to make sure we have the best schools that we can deliver. And it just happens that the time is now. So it's generally not ideal to do it in the fall, but in generally these are the spring meeting, but that's why folks can see these types of questions on here.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Ms. Leskey.
I'm also in favor of this expenditure. I think it's the right way to collect information so that the, the path is clear and, and informed by experts.
Ms. McCollum.
Thank you. Just a point of inquiry first, Mr. Chair. Did you mention that select and advisory and capital have already all voted on this?
I do not know if they've all voted on it. They will be voting. I believe, I believe select voted, but I didn't watch the meeting yesterday. So I know that they did request us to vote on it. And this is the time that we have to do it because they want us to be finalized next week and we don't have another meeting.
Okay. So my, I have two comments. One is, and not to seem ungrateful or appreciative of the support here from other committees in town. I am. I mean, if I had had my, things that had been addressed, you know, two years ago. But I just, and I'm, I'm really happy. I'm, I'm very thankful for and grateful for the current, you know, select board and their leadership and, and the ownership of R and M issues, repair maintenance issues townwide. I think that they have a, a really good vision these days and I'm pretty sure of that. And especially as it relates to the schools, which is my priority as an elected representative of this board. I just want to note that, because I get, I, I do get defensive about the schools not being collaborated with in a timely manner when it comes to certain issues that involve the schools. I want to thank select board member Ellen Marr for having reached out with some potential language for what has now become Article 12 here, we see. So there was some collaboration on that. I had not personally seen anything related to the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund, I don't believe. And, you know, I, I just, I just want to note that, and perhaps there was some efforts to collaborate that I'm just not aware of, and that's entirely possible. All I'm trying to underscore here is that when we have issues that are, you know, community at large questions that will be presented that have to do with the schools, I just want to make sure that the schools are involved from the outset. So that we are a, we're, we're a primary stakeholder in that collaborative process. Which brings me to my, which again, and especially, you know, the, the chairperson, select of the, of the, of the school committee and our superintendent of schools. That is segue into my next point, which is that these two items, which are really important and advantageous items to our school district and should, I think, realize benefits for our students in the long term, are the product, the end product of, and, and even though we're not even there yet, this is gonna be approved at town meeting. This is a community question, goes to ballot. So we're not even, it's not even finished yet. This is just sort of, we're, we're trying to put this into that public forum. But even at this point, this is a product of many hours of numerous stakeholders that were involved in talking about these issues. And I want to make sure that it's recognized because I know that they're looking for our approval. I noticed that the school facilities committee was not asked to, you know, vote on this and put it on the warrant. And I thought maybe that's because they're not elected. But then I realized there's two unelected boards on there. And I know that those committees are traditionally involved in, in, in warrant articles like this. So I don't know, maybe it becomes superfluous, extraneous to put other committees on there. But, you know, it's important to note that there are a group of people in the school facilities committee that are dedicating their personal time and attention and intellectual energy and capital into these ideas and concepts and that, that, that they, they gave rise to a lot of this as well. Jason Earls is the individual chairs that committee. It's sort of in flux right now because a couple of members had fallen off, including myself, Mr. Kearney, Ms. Leskey, who previously served on it. I just wanted to recognize those people. And I also wanted to recognize our district leadership, most importantly, our superintendent of schools, who has been a champion of issues like this for our school district. And none of this would be happening if it wasn't for him. It, it just, it just wouldn't. He has provided a level of leadership and partnership in this that has made this possible, that has given energy at very early stages, just gestational stages of this, that has led us to this point, which again, isn't even the final stage. We're far from it. But I think it, it warrants mentioning that, you know, Dr. Sullivan, your vision for the schools, this is, I think, you know, symptomatic or, or maybe illustrative of your overall vision for the schools, just one element, but this is a big picture item and you've always been supportive of this and helped to find ways where this might be supported and where we might be able to thrust forward these sort of concepts and plans. So I just wanted to thank you publicly. And I'll, I'll plan to do so again, if I'm, I had to speak on this at the town meeting, because I want to announce to everyone how important your leadership has been. And that's not to diminish the contributions of other district leaders like Dr. Scollins, Mrs. Serwanka, Ms. Owen, but obviously, you know, you are at that top of that food chain. And I just wanted to make sure that you were recognized for that. And I'll continue to do that. So that's it.
Can I mention one of those? Because Craig mentioned it, I think, a little earlier. So I think it's very relevant to understand, this is part of the bigger scheme of things. But we have been asked to vote on these, and this one specifically, maybe not a lot of information or not all the information that we would need. But if, we should reserve the right to reconsider if something is, else is going on where capital budget advisory and the board of selectmen are not in favor of this, because they are the leads on betting the way we spend money in this town. So I just, if there's something else that we don't know and it has not, and not, not to our attention, I think we want to move the process along. I'm fine with this. But if there's something that we learn later that maybe somebody's got a bigger problem with this, it could be unrelated to the actual topic of it, but we should just be able to, we have time before the meeting, but we should be able to review it again if there's new information that we don't know.
So that's a great point. That does raise a question of logistics that I'm not equipped to answer, which is I know that the warrant goes to print at a date certain. And I don't know if you can update that warrant. I guess, I suppose we get updated at the town meeting. So, and of course, we would reserve the right to do that. I've been involved in these, these discussions and there, there have been a lot, there are people moving to, to Mr. McCollum's point. There are people moving very quickly to try and accomplish a lot. This is one small piece of a larger, of a much significantly larger proposal that will be at the special town meeting. And so there are, there have been steps that have been taken that, you know, moved forward. I won't say without the schools, but moved forward. You know, and then we've, we've caught up. But the indications I've received from members of those other committees is that there's broad support for, for this, this, this particular article. Although I'm not going to say that there would be unanimous support on each of those, each of those committees. But those committees, and we all know this, are charred, have different charges than our schools. And I think from my perspective, knowing what I know about this building, having been in it, going through the open house, having seen the windowless classrooms, having seen the rooms where we have a divider and storage in another room, having seen the layout, the way that teachers have, have manipulated furniture to create a collaborative learning environment. The way I've seen in the meetings here, children having to study in hallways to get the group, group, the group learning expense. I think the, and I have, I will confess that early on in my tenure here, I was not sold on the idea that we need a significant renovation of our, of our facilities, but I am now. And so from a school perspective, which is informed by different needs potentially than advisory, capital, and even select, I am fully in support of, of the, of the step taken here. So I'll, unless there's any other comments, I will open up for a resolution to express the school committee's support of Article 12, which would be the School Environmental Insight Testing Analysis and the expenditure of 400 ground, $400,000 for that purpose. So a motion has been made by Ms. McCollum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kearney. I'll go around and we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Leskey.
Aye.
Ms. McCollum.
Aye.
Mr. Dyle. Aye. The motion is passed. The school committee has expressed support for his approval of Article 12, the School Environmental Sight Testing Analysis. Thank you very much, everyone. I am now going to pull what I'll call a, a Mr. McClellan and thank publicly Mr. McClellan for all his work that he has done over the past two years. He has been a unwavering champion for getting our facilities up to date, for getting our capital, getting attention on the needs of our schools. These are issues that were not at the forefront of the town and I firmly believe. Uh these are issues that were not at the forefront of the town, and I firmly believe that were it not for his fervent support for this, that we would not have had this vote just now, and we would be years away from addressing the needs that we have. So uh Ms. McCollum, from my personal perspective, as a as a as a towns person and as a elected representative, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to have it. Happy to do it. Thanks. Thanks to all that were involved.
Great. So um with that, uh that covers, there are no more topics not reasonably anticipated by by the chair, which is me. And again, that was not anticipated because I did not know that the uh select board was going to make that vote and request or make that request of us until this morning. So I I apologize to people who weren't would have wanted more notice on that, but we did not have it. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve.
No, we have. Well, um we have caught up significantly. The new minutes will be ready for the next meeting.
Perfect.
Earlier this.
Um do we have any um thoughts on future agenda items that we'd like to cover?
Yes, um.
Uh Mr. Kearney.
Yeah, uh we talked about having safe harbor in. We want to address TV job.
Yep. Okay, we have that and uh we have that. We're talking about that, so that everything works.
There is also too, it's like I I was hoping to try to do this in a in the school council meeting. However, I do I do want to get like at least it on the agenda to talk about like um wellness days. Uh I've been hearing from a lot of parents, like it it's like the kids can't um and I see it because I live it. Um if my daughter's sick in the morning, she can't go back to school. I'll be late when it counts against her. It seems to be uh it seems to be pro, it just seems to be. I think we should let if they if they need an hour to catch up, I think we should allow that um without penalty. Also, uh the fact that the kids want to go look at schools is now not acceptable as an absence, um which is really difficult because we're looking at colleges.
It it it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And remember, they do have a certain amount of um unexcused absences that they're allowed before before um impacts credit.
And then they can always get excused. Important topic. I don't think we need it. We should address it just yet because maybe people are interested in it. We might want to address it on its own agenda. This is just to get the, so what I'm hearing is the wellness days and 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 actually just protocol and absences, I think, might be a good pressure for for the community.
For a future.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Carr, anything?
Here's one we might consider uh just in a collaborative way with the other committees. Maybe we might invite periodically, whenever it meets the schedule, the the liaison or the chair of select uh advisory and capital budget to just come into me with the school, and we could have a twenty minute conversation with them and say, here's what's on our plate, what's on your plate, and we're just having an open conversation with them.
I I I like that idea, and I'd like to dovetail it into what we've talked about before is just streamlining and getting ahead of our own capital budgeting planning. And I think that's a an important component. I I'm cognizant of people's time. I want to make sure that's a good use of one's time. So maybe I don't know if that's a subcommittee or it's in this committee, um but I think it's I think that's a great suggestion. Ms. Leskey, anything for you?
Uh writing piqued my interest just sort of over time. Um and sort of I I think one, seeing what the district is doing from K twelve, but then I I would love to know as a as a parent, also sort of what we can be, what we should be seeing um at home and what skills um we can, how we can support our students. So sort of how the families can work with their students um in support of their education, particularly around growing them as writers. So.
Ms. McCollum, anything on your mind? All right, and I mentioned uh mine, which was the um the update on curriculum implementation and reactions there too. So that's uh that's a thing. So I think that'll cover our future agenda items. We do have a reason to go into an executive session. That's the discussion. It's reason number three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. So what I'm going to do is request a motion to uh have the committee move into executive session and then to adjourn both meetings at the end of that, so we will not reconvene in public session. Uh so we will turn off the video feed uh once we go into executive session, but you won't miss anything because the meeting will end after the executive session. Um so uh with that, uh do I have a motion to move into executive session with with the adjournment of that, adjourning our public meeting as well?
Motion to move into executive session uh or number three.
Motion made by Ms. McCollum. Motion seconded by Mr. Carr. Roll call vote is required. Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Leskey.
Aye.
Ms. McCollum.
Aye.
Mr. Dial. Aye. All right. We will now move into executive session. Thank you, everyone at home for uh for watching, and uh please stay attuned to your schools and support the other things that we need you to support. Thank you. Good night.